Okay.
I have no idea what it's about other than the building permit.
Right, and we I think have all the paperwork saying the HOA said it's okay and.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
So do we need anything here to go through this or?
Well, I had I was under the assumption that he was he was gonna be here but um he and he emailed me, do you need anything else from me? And I said, no, I think we're all set, see you tomorrow night. And he said, oh, I'm in Rhode Island, I won't be there. I was like, oh. He's like, do I have to be? And I said, I mean, if they have any questions, it's always good to be there, but if you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
But he just wanted to get it moving, so.
Okay, alright, so he didn't ask to to stop it like the discussion or?
Here we are. No, 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 he wants to have it.
Okay. Alright, uh so we're discussing uh building permit uh for John Solinsky. Lot ninety on map three, uh Prop Bound Road. So it seems like we have everything in order. We got the recommendation from the planning board that they thought it was okay, uh we have the driveway permit. The homeowners association agreement.
Private road agreement.
Yeah, private road agreement's already been signed. Um do you guys have any issues with issuing this building permit?
No.
No? Jason?
Yeah.
Alright, make a motion to um issue a building permit uh for map three lot ninety uh to Mr. Solinsky. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
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 That was the toughest decision that they've made all day.
It's nice when all the paperwork's done.
I know, right?
It was a good launch, yeah.
Yeah.
The hazard mitigation statement?
Mm-hmm.
Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that somewhere? Is it in here?
Should be in your your. Highlighted in yellow. I thought I put it right at the.
Alright.
It's in somebody's pile.
Oh.
Highlighted with the yellow box around it.
Lou, I see a yellow highlighter in Lou's pile.
Oh, yep, there you go. Sorry Lou, you get you got the pile for Sean. That's the only thing that was different, was that piece of paper. Nope, just the one piece of paper with the highlighter, yellow highlighter right on the top. There you go.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, the next that's the next part to the Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Alright. So uh we're the town's gonna be updating its hazard mitigation plan. Uh this is a process that takes place every five years to keep the plan current and effective. A hazard mitigation plan helps our community to identify the natural and human cause hazards we face such as flooding, severe storms, or wildfire. It outlines long-term strategies to reduce risk and keep people and properties safe. Having an approved plan also makes the town eligible for certain grants that can fund improvements for mitigation projects before or after disaster strikes. As we update our plan, we're inviting everyone to get involved. You can take a short community survey and participate in a mapping activity to share your local knowledge and concerns. Your input is a key part of making this plan useful and effective as possible. A link to the community survey can be found at the town website. The hazard map will be posted at the town offices from September third until September twenty-third. So please feel free to draw right on the map your experience of hazards and your switch and try to record the year of the event as well as any impacts. The planning team meetings are open to the public and a draft of the updated plan will be available for review and comment later this fall. So.
Thanks, required by the state.
Yeah.
To read it out. I'm just gonna throw it in at the minutes.
So we have we have that map available?
I I don't have the map.
Oh.
I don't know if they're gonna give us the map.
Well, we should have already received it.
Yeah, well, I've I've been to the meetings.
Yeah.
Um but she didn't give us the map to my knowledge, unless she gave it to Steven. Steven's on it, Jenny's on it, I'm on it.
Yeah.
Um Peter and or Keegan, they're taking turns.
Alright, so we don't have anything on display?
I don't have anything right now.
Alright, so that wasn't wholly accurate. There's nothing on display from September third. Um but we'll work to get that.
I guess not. Well, the the um survey is.
Yeah, the survey, but we need that map.
Survey, survey. Yeah.
Available, because that's a part of it.
Yep.
Um so we'll have to probably change those dates and update the statement.
Yeah, I'll email her tomorrow.
Because it seems to be twenty days that it needs to be um available for review.
I'll uh email her tomorrow.
Hmm, thank you. Did you have anything that you wanted to chat about uh from last night's F A C meeting or?
Uh yeah, it went well. Um two two people expressed interest in joining Joe Somro. Jim? Yeah, two people. Uh I I um I said I can meet with them next Monday. Uh last night's meeting went well. We went over, we divided up um the departments like we did last year, so uh we're ready to start. Uh I drafted up the kickoff note this morning, Debbie has that. Uh so we're we're rolling. There's a schedule in there and it is and everything, so we should be good to go.
Perfect.
Alright, cool.
Yeah, and my plan is that if one or both these guys want to wanna help out, uh I'll just bring them into the the departments I cover and then see how it works out. If they're interested, then we'll just teach them with uh through Luke and Bruce and I.
Alright.
So get them interested and then rather than just throw a department at them.
Was there a third and then he said he couldn't do it?
Third, so he couldn't.
That was the third, okay.
Commitment, yeah.
I thought I thought that's.
Alright, so with those two potential, how many solid members do you have right now?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, Bruce, Luke and I.
Alright.
So.
I'm sorry, who Bruce?
Uh Bruce Rotzola.
Mm-hmm.
Uh Luke Moran.
Oh, okay.
And then myself, yeah.
Alright, excellent. Um and then earlier, um just before we went into the non-public, um Alan had asked for some worksheets.
I mentioned it to him and I told him I gave you a letter requesting it.
Okay.
Yeah.
He knows what what.
Yeah, as soon as the time comes.
Alright, excellent.
Normally request it.
Yeah.
Alright, so you understand?
Yeah.
Alright, 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 excellent.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh about halfway through updating the master spreadsheet and uh and I broke it, so supposed to be done yesterday and then today.
You broke the spreadsheet?
I broke it, yeah. I'm just trying to figure how I broke it, so I'll figure it out.
Undo, undo.
I know, exactly. Gateway, go back.
It was unfortunate, yeah.
Go back in the day.
But yeah, I I'm expecting any any day now I'll have that up and up and ready, so.
Okay.
That's good.
Alright, cool, no thank you.
Yeah.
You know, getting it going and then, you know, getting that post out looking for uh members.
Yeah.
Too.
Yeah, Debbie did that for me, so that was good.
Yeah. Um do you have any questions for us like at this point with that?
Nope, I think we're good. I think we have a a flow going, so I think this every year could should be getting easier, so that's good.
Yeah, um and then the quarter three review?
Yeah, uh that's the end of this month, right? Yeah, end of this month.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
So I actually included in the in that note was uh the the current spend to date, uh highlighted areas where we spent, so um I'll I'll send you that note as well and then at the end end of the September, I'll do the the quarterly review as well.
Okay, alright, cool, thank you. Alright, anything else?
No, that's enough.
Awesome.
Um Debbie, did you have anything for this section?
No, um oh, that um thing from Cody, another deputy wagon.
Yeah. Hmm, looks like they're looking to appoint uh Caitlin Valancourt as a deputy uh fire warden. Do you guys have any issues with this appointment or?
So Cody's the fire warden or?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, he's a fire warden.
Yeah.
And this would be his wife.
Yeah, and this I guess it's to me not clear if, because we had appointed other deputies like
Well, yeah, there's one, there was one last two weeks ago or whatever and then.
In the last couple of months. Yeah.
But I don't think there's a fiduciary gain, so I don't see a conflict of interest necessarily.
Hmm.
Do you?
No, like me, the only thing that's not clear is why we need multiples or if there is or if this is gonna be the only deputy or?
Just a, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a backup.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you've got.
Backup to a backup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You you've got your um the two ladies over on in the window, which they issued the uh um the fire permits also, don't they?
Are you saying the town clerks?
Oh, this is fire warden.
Okay, but according to that paperwork, it was more for filling out the fire permits.
Yeah, they can they have app they have a bit the ability to do that and they can also post like, so say Cody's not around and the second deputy isn't around, this person can say there's a burn banner in effect or all that other stuff.
But the town clerks still can do them also, right?
They can, as far as I know, I haven't heard they can't.
Alright. Make a vote motion to approve um Caitlin Valancourt as a deputy fire warden.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Should get your class done, Mindy. Nice, fifteen hour.
Alright, Jason?
Um I'm looking through and I don't know um how accurate our V S and A sheet is up to, but I'm seeing that there's plenty of money available for speed limit sign changes.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, it's been over a month and we haven't seen a single sign changed. Is there a reason for that? Not that you're aware of?
No, um the only I weighed in on was a the stop sign change.
Yeah, that was that was gonna be another subject.
Yep, yeah, so it was the that's all that we hadn't officially confirmed, taking that stop sign out.
Oh, I thought that wasn't.
From Page Hill.
I didn't get that.
Did you at the meeting I was absent from or?
What's that? No, we didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah.
No, so I didn't think that we had.
Where I doubt.
Because we got I got an email from Peter asking if it was okay to
Right.
to take that out.
Right.
And I said we hadn't decided.
Okay.
I understand he's short staffed.
They got a group, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't.
Should have selectmen go and replace signs for him.
And I also didn't get that it was definitely approved for
You didn't?
The changing, I mean, you guys discussed it and everything and you thought it should be and then Lou said something about keeping Temple.
You can't keep it.
On on Temple Road.
And you said it wasn't enforceable, you were gonna talk to Mike.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I saw the vote.
It was.
Yeah, so I was at the meeting that.
I spoke with Mike.
Okay.
About it.
So I didn't know that it was voted on to.
And. Both of me.
It was.
Both of us were
I'll miss that, okay.
Uh more positive on just keeping the twenty-five mile per hour sign over by Memorial Park.
Even though it's not enforceable?
Even if it's not enforceable, it's one of those things that um
That would that would require a separate motion, because we already had a motion to change all twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs in town.
Mm-hmm.
To thirty, so the uh as of now, that's been the decree for over a month and then none of them have been changed.
There's just a lot of small kids that are.
There is, there is, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
And I think most people drive fifteen and then you're gonna get a few crazies who do what they do, no matter what the sign says. But it's like going through parking lot down there.
Yeah, but typically if you go to other towns, you'll see that by a park that that the kids have to go across in the street and stuff like that. They usually end up having uh lower speed limits in in that area.
Yeah.
And I hadn't um spoken to uh chief about that. Um I don't know what they would do if if they did pull somebody over, if they could just if they'd have to knock five miles off anyways and start it as though it was thirty or but when he came in, I thought it he spoke to the point of it clarifying things to change them all. Um that's what we had voted on, was changing all the twenties to thirties. Um and then when you were out, Lou had um brought up, you know, asking about keeping that twenty-five mile per hour zone at the park. And that's when we had the back and forth about non-enforceability and uh so I'm still at that, like I feel like that one should be changed as well, just because I don't know, it's not the law, so.
Yeah.
Why keep it?
Yeah, I don't think it does much to deter, when you're talking five miles an hour.
Yeah. Maybe we could put up more kids at play signs on top like as well.
Yeah, I don't think it's it's that we're looking at it as an enforceable act act, but just a reminder to the people driving by that.
Just a suggestion.
Well, and there's so there's a park, we can put, you know, park, you know, keep speeds, you know, slow, like slow down, park or something, some other sign in place.
We could do something like that, yeah.
Yeah, let them know that they're coming up on a park, maybe.
Yep.
Hmm, so yeah, I haven't heard about any timelines on any other ones or that one or have you heard anything down there, Mindy?
Uh yeah, I know he's working on getting them ordered.
Highway? Okay.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, no, it's it is in the works. I think we were waiting on um the quote maybe, because there's so many, to see how much it just costs and from different companies, because he does use multiple companies.
Okay.
And then he was out most of last week too and short-staffed.
Mm-hmm.
So I think he's playing catch-up and maybe it's just kind of gotten a little sidelined maybe, but I'll tie, I'm going in tomorrow, I can
And what about um like the Concord Prison, they do um
Yeah.
Signs.
Do they do state like speed road signs?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
I never knew that.
Yep.
Hmm.
I just texted you back, I was like, oh no, she texted me and said, when should I come? Um.
Yeah, they um they used to do them for here, I thought, like just now, but I haven't seen that come across.
Yeah. Yeah. I had the um thing on my desk, like the flyer that I got at one of the conferences.
You still have it?
It's on my desk.
Yeah, maybe do a screenshot, I can call and see if I can get a quote.
Okay.
Throw in the.
Might be less expensive.
Uh probably the last I remember, they were pretty reasonable.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
So what's that?
So we're still holding off on Temple?
In the works.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, the stop sign at the end of Going Road.
Yep.
What do you think?
Yeah, no, it seems to make sense, because you're speaking about going from coming from Going, going on to Page Hill and going to the right, right?
Right.
That goes towards me.
You're going to Smithville.
Oh, towards.
So you'd be going on to Smithville Road.
Yeah.
I think Page Hill starts right where Going Road is, right?
Yeah.
And then that becomes Smithville, so it's essentially.
Alright. Yeah, no, it's seems fine, like again, if we could put an optional sign in there, like just a I don't know what you'd put in to let people know.
Yeah, I mean, you could have like an orange sign.
Mm-hmm.
Showing, because on the other side, we do have one that shows that there's a corner with two roads.
Yeah.
You could just show the same thing, kind of like he did on Stoll Road.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not opposed to taking that stop sign down.
And we didn't get any feedback that you know of from residents, because the request was put out there.
Yeah.
If you're watching and you have something to say, let us know.
Yeah.
Nothing came to you, nothing came, no feedback uh residents on Going Road about that stop sign.
Were you not concerned with removing that stop sign, Lou?
No, they're they don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. Alright.
Do we need to motion it?
Yeah.
Make a motion to remove the stop sign at the end of Going Road in Smith Village.
There is, second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we'll pause on this now and we'll jump in. Wanted to get it right to about six thirty, um just in case anybody else wanted to come in and chat about the playground and what you're looking to talk about for Parks and Rec.
Sure.
Alright, so the floor is yours, Mindy.
Hang on a second. Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Um so we had an incident at the field, at the playground on that playset that I wanted to replace. Um I had, it was last week. This week's leading into one another, so I'm sorry. Um and we reached out to, I reached out to I think someone's tagged me on Facebook, that's what I saw, the original damage. Um still haven't heard from the parent though. They I guess that there was a um a young child that got cut. It wasn't a bad cut is all I got from what I've heard so far. So I had, my son was out, so I had him just go caution tape off the slide for the night, because it was around six thirty, six forty-five when I saw it, I think. And then the next day I had DPW, because I think that would be because Peter was still gone, so that would have been Wednesday. DPW went out and I just said, can you just check it, take the slide out, that has to go. And then they close off with the great this grate that they've been using for portions that can't be um like sectioned. It's just it's safety, to be I guess, it's just like a safety.
So they removed the whole slide?
They had to.
Yeah.
It was up at the top and he said, uh Keegan said when he got there, not only was there about a two-foot crack that the boy had got his leg through, but underneath where it's attached to the metal or the landing, it was also cracking.
Hmm.
So then he called me and he said, hey, there's more damage. So I think I forwarded you everything from that I sent Derek.
Yeah.
I CC'd you on it.
Yeah, I got all the pictures and that, yeah.
Yeah, so they found so much more damage. There were screws missing from the tunnel that's above, it's like three, four feet off the ground, the bolts are gone, so they took that out. The other slides had massive damage and some of them around where it's attached to the thing, which that's a twelve-foot slide. So that came out and then the one of the monkey bars, um Keegan was just doing the, you know, going across and he found one of them was um had metal um going outward, where he's got rougher fingers, but he's like, there's a little kick, he got a finger stuck in there.
Yeah.
There's a picture, I think, in there. He tried to get a good angle, but it was it's high, so they took that out. It's pretty much down to the posts in some landings. The posts are not secured anymore because of when you remove that much stuff.
Yeah.
It's gonna loosen them. So right now we had, we talked to Primex, they said basically what they had done was was good enough for a very temper- very temporary fix, which was the four-foot orange fencing and then like keep-out signs.
Yeah.
Um I just want to, for now, I'd like to get that off the field, off the, I mean, off the playground.
Yeah.
Because there's no coming back from that.
Yeah, it sounds like it's pretty, yeah.
It's done. Um I have her birthday present. My husband's coming in on Sunday and he's regrading the whole park, the whole playground anyway. And so I was hoping to get that taken out of there before then. It would make it a lot easier and then we could bring in more sand, because there's some roots from when we had to take the tree out that he has to take out and that whole area is gonna need sand too. And so it'll just be a lot easier to not have to maneuver around something that has to be taken out anyway. DPW said that they take it out, so that's a non-issue. Um we do have, so obviously I'm not a huge fan of leaving an empty park. So I ran some numbers. I spent most of the day Friday on the phone and working with a couple companies to get some quotes to see if we could get a playset within reasonably within a reasonably priced
Yeah.
maybe doable, I don't know. And what it came down to right now, I have to crunch some more numbers for my revolving fund um to see where we're at there. But I think I found a set. I was able to get three quotes. One of them is, he's also, he he did the, he gave, sold us the smaller set.
Hmm.
Um so he gave us, he actually gave us a six thousand dollar discount on it. This does not include installation though. As of November first, all the prices are going to be affected across the board with recreational equipment that are coming from overseas. So this price is only locked in until November first for a couple of these things, so if I could figure out the financials and possibly purchase it through mostly revolving and maybe some cap reserve, because this is definitely a maintenance issue. We could at the very least have it here and then either raise money for installation or try to get volunteers like we had when we installed the original.
Hmm.
But at the very least, I mean, I have to do, it's gonna take me a minute. I just, I didn't have the opportunity to get to it.
What what's the dollar figure there?
So with three quotes and I did this, so I worked with um I worked with him and I had I knew I was on a time crunch, so he had reached out to some people he knew in the same business. Um so they basically took the same playset that I liked, that I thought was financially possible. I'm using that loosely. Um and this and it's the same piece of equipment. Um I'm gonna start here. Who wants it first?
Anyway, go ahead.
So there's, it's the same piece of equipment, because they basically all can buy the same stuff. So I I found one that I liked, it has a lot of climbing apparatuses on it, a lot of slides which the kids really enjoy. And then the all things recreational, that's the gentleman that I worked with before, he gave us a six thousand dollar discount just for being, well, A, he knows a program, and B, he likes recurring.
Yeah.
He also, if he said, because we're moving the Gaga court and it's wood, and he said if we had any trouble, he'd actually donate a Gaga court, which is about a two thousand dollar donation. So I kind of like the guy, I have to say. Um he also helped me find another company, because I could not find one for a third quote, and I know that you guys prefer to have three. Again, this is an option instead of leaving it empty.
Yeah.
We could just dump a giant pile of sand in the middle and the kids would probably be just as happy, right? So.
It's not a bad idea, a pile of sand and some tubes.
I mean.
King of the hill.
Yeah.
Trust me, I it was my first thought, because. Trust me, I, it was my first thought, because it's a heck of a lot cheaper than this, but. Even if this is an option down the road, um, I do plan on having significantly more fundraising coming up, I was planning on doing it for this anyway. To raise money for this particular, not this specific one. But I was planning on doing it to get the playset replaced anyway, it's just, uh, it fast-tracked itself for me. So, um. I guess I just want approval to remove the old pieces that are in there. And then to consider. If I, again, if I can get my numbers in there right and it works and it's not spending every dime I have in there, cause that's not gonna get us anywhere if we're broke. Um, I think we could possibly pull this off.
So, yeah, so we have a quote from All Things Recreation. For forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, a quote from Nationwide Canopies for fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And a quote from Sports and Golf Solutions, and their quote comes in at fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Uh, his discount did make a difference in the price, that's why there's a big gap, like a.
And it looks like a good.
Yeah.
A good, relatively large set.
It's really. Yeah.
And they're expensive.
They are so, yeah.
Even for a small one, it's expensive.
Yeah, exactly, I'm thinking even when I had my kids.
The installation on that's like twenty thousand dollars, that's why the price is so massively different, it's, it is, it's. Not gonna be hi- as high, they do have one slide that's a little bit higher than like state regulations for what we have for a base, but. It's signi- it's, it's cool, I. Got to see it through different angles and things and it's got some cool stuff on it, so. There was another option, it was called the Travis, um, that I really liked, um. But then I saw this climbing thing and I could just see the kids, there's like, it's kinda sun, yeah, and it's like angled and I was like, that would be really fun. And we don't have it, um, on the other, the other piece, so it's, again, I have, I do have to check numbers, I just wanna see. Where you guys are at with the idea of. Using revolving funds, um, that we have and possibly tapping into cap reserve, we do have money there, but I, I, again. I had no intention of spending money this, anymore this year, but here we are.
Yeah.
Nice to see these.
Also, hell yeah.
Yeah, I love the idea of using revolving funds, cause it was all raised for, you know, recreation activities, um, so.
Yeah, I just ha- I, we had a. I just gonna, it's gonna take a hot minute, cause I do have to, we have a huge amount of money coming in from. Program that, like soc- with soccer and field hockey, huge signup numbers this year. I think we're at two hundred kids.
Congratulations.
It's crazy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty awesome.
Very, yeah. So, um, but with that comes also expenditures.
Yeah.
For those set children, their games and uniforms and whatnot.
Should wash out in the positive, is what you're saying.
So I'm, yeah, like, oh, yeah, yeah, for sure, sorry. Sorry. Um, so I definitely. Wanna do, I wanna make sure that I do write by. The programs that we have and we don't think you, thank you, we don't, uh, spend every dime in there.
Yeah.
I do, again, I do plan on fundraising to kind of offset the costs as well and also. Sorry. Um. Yeah, to offset the costs and then maybe whether we have to raise money for the installation. We, we have projects still going on too, so I do have other expenditures that I have to account for before. So that's why I wanna do the numbers first before I can fully commit to asking to do this, but, you know, he has, he gave us till, I don't. I'm gonna check the other ones, I know All Things Rec gave us until, the, the cost until, uh, November. And expiration date's October fourth, but he said the number holds until November first, so I don't know about the other two companies, I didn't, I forgot. I got those like last night.
Yeah, as far as, you know, taking it down, it doesn't sound like there's much value to it right now, it's even. Unstable and has to come down anyways.
Yeah.
Right?
And be kinda unsightly for Autumn Fest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That too.
I don't want that, or I don't want that.
Actually, I might have a little more space for something. A big pile of sand.
The tannarite pile.
There might be another pile of sand if this, yeah, if I do the numbers and you guys see a pile of sand there, you'll know what happened with the number, so.
Yeah, just try to have, uh, Peter layer in some of those, the culverts.
They can climb through the fifteen inch culverts.
If that was actually legal, I would do that, this is.
The old slide.
That would be, yeah, actually, I wanna, I'll talk to him. Let me call, let me call Derek up right away, so real quick.
Right. No. Yeah, so I think, uh, it sounds like it has to come down, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion to tear down the old playground and remove it.
I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye, aye.
Yeah, I appreciate it, it's been, I have been losing sleep over this this weekend, I, you know how I am with safety stuff and it's like, I could just see kids climbing on that thing, trying to get in there to see if they can. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I think I went by Sunday and all the stuff was still intact, so that was a good sign that.
Loose, though, that's what concerns me, yeah, it's intact, some kids think they can climb one, that's what makes me nervous is.
It'd be like, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, cause kids will climb on anything, that's for sure.
When you're saying it depends.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that we need to, um, just mention is that Primex, um, recommended that, uh. The installation be done by the manufacturer. As, for viability reasons.
Of the new set, okay.
They prefer it, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, so that would, if that's the case and I couldn't get enough for the installation, then I would, I would, we'd have to do it next year.
But it's a recommendation.
Yeah.
No, it's like, it is best practice to have a manufacturer do it and it's kind of what we had spoken about last year, but, so.
Well legally, uh, legally speaking, it's not the manufacturer, it's actually a hired company.
Someone that's off, yeah, certified person.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, if that's the case, um, we'd have to look at. Probably next year for an installation, for sure, which is typically when you kind of start doing this kind of work again.
Yes, in the springtime.
Yeah, but just to.
I wonder if it would pay to see what the prices are going next year.
Well, what's happening?
If they get better.
Get, get the set here now and take it near to that price, oh.
I'm saying, I get it.
Tariffs kick in.
If we're not gonna install it.
Tariffs kick in November first.
Right, that's this.
They kicked in already.
No, they.
Yeah, I just paid tariffs on a product I ordered, they just kicked in, everything is tariffed from every country.
Yeah.
They're already here, this price is including tariffs, I would assume if.
It's not, that's what he, at least what he told me, he said in November first that you could, and the only reason he had suj- he was telling, letting me know. Was so, if I went on to go for next year, that there's, these prices won't look like this. I, I don't think he would lie about it, cause if it comes out next year and it's the same place.
Right, but he knows. Pretty much what we know, that there's tariffs, right now in my mind, the tariffs have made. Everything uncertain and maybe by next year, things will be more stable and. Possibly companies won't be throwing as much money as a cushion for tariffs. When everything's.
Yeah.
I, I'm not a financial expert, but that's just how I kind of view it, like.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the date for November first is what I heard, that's what he had mentioned too, so I, that's why I didn't remember to get it.
That's interesting, cause I just, I ordered the part in August. And I just got an email today's, and then I looked on the website and they said effective. End of August. All products.
Maybe you got pre-tariffs.
Remember the pre-tariff? I don't.
Tariff anticipation.
I didn't look into the tariff.
I think it does show the uncertainty that's out there.
Yeah.
And that, with that, I mean, sometimes you can get a good deal because somebody didn't plan well enough. But often, it's an opportunity to raise your price.
Yeah.
And hey, if it doesn't go that high, great, we made a little more profit.
Right, exactly. Right.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just, I wanted to make sure there was, there was a solution to a problem if you wanted to have a solution to the problem.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, uh, to me, there's.
The prices are all fairly polar, I mean, close to each other.
Yeah. Yeah, which seems right, and then even like, the only reason that.
No pun intended.
That other one was lower, it was the discount that he gave us for me returning customer and.
Yeah.
I know, it's, it's a lot less than what we were looking at even last year, so I don't know about pushing it too much.
It's a different system.
Yeah, 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 but still, you know what I mean, like, there's a lot less, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the price is definitely less than it was, um. This specific one, I have no idea, cause I had never seen this one.
Yeah.
So, um, but yeah, I, again, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had options and then, um, if it was something. That interested you, I could move forward with doing more research and doing like, uh, on our financial end and then also. Um, if you agree to it, we could put the order in, it's not my.
Did he's give an indication what kind of lead time is on these products?
Um, this specific one is, um. It's a sh- a ship quick, it was listed as a ship quick, so it wouldn't be, it would be here, um, in the fall. So, it wouldn't get here in the middle of winter, like a lot of.
I'm just thinking like if we were awake.
Yeah.
To revisit it, how, what are the normal lead times, if, we, it'd be nice to have something up for.
Spring.
Spring.
Oh, for sure.
Is what I'm saying, and I wouldn't wanna put this off and then end up waiting till July to get the thing and, so.
Well, I mean, that is, that could be a problem, cause if this is a quick ship, it might be something that they have in inventory here. If someone buys it, they have to then reorder and ship and then.
Cause I think that other system was like a six to eight week, something, if I remember, it was like two months, I remember.
Hmm, I feel like, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
I'm sure seasonal.
Game time was like three or four months on ship, on.
Oh, on the old one that you?
On that, when I was trying to get that one piece to fix that one thing and they. Yeah.
And so it varies like all the different.
Right.
It just depends on where it's coming from and what it is and if they have it in stock or not.
I think it'd be worthwhile looking at the numbers and seeing if you think you can pull it off and then seeing what the percentage is, you know, revolving versus, um, reserve.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I don't want myself in a position where I give something else breaks, which.
Don't say it out loud.
Seriously, give me a break, um, which by the way, the skimmers are fixed, they're lovely.
Yay, it's not leaking anymore.
It, it, some of them. There's no leaks, a lot that I can, they tested them, I don't have a water, they're testing me personally, but, um, it looks really good and they did a really good job, so.
Well, not that you'd know. Right.
So was, was there, um, the rough surface able to be addressed or?
No, cause we didn't drain the pool.
Oh.
Yeah, this is specifically for skimmers, yeah, and they were, they were bad, and when they got in there, there was another issue that came up where one of them, there was like. I guess this is a really wonky skimmer system. And I got a call of like, hey, we need to drain this pool down now, can you, is there anyone around with a pump that can help us, cause there's, there was some sort of like sensor. Inside one of the skimmers, so the water level was too high to let them take it out. So I had to have DPW run over there and drop in another pump to get more out, to get that, the, the sensor thing to stop. For them to remove and replace and then raise it back to where they belonged, where they belong, because they were. Way low.
Wow.
There was bad.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still kick myself that I didn't know that we could do this and we should've just done it with the first thing.
The coping.
Hmm.
Watching the coping get cut, hurt a lot, so, but it's done and it looks good, they did a really good job, so.
Yeah.
And pool's gonna be closed very soon and that, we got some work in the poolhouse that needs to get done, but that's our chit-chat stuff, so.
Yeah.
S- um, so can you reach out to Dee and make sure you enter that into the clear gov?
Yeah, I actually talked to her, she came in on Sunday night.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we were chit-chatting about it and caught our phones and some other stuff too, like the skimmers and stuff with the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that way, um, there's, cause there are some things that need to get done, like sand has to get, the, the filters, the sand has to get replaced every two years. Which is a, not, it's not a big cost, like, I think eleven or twelve hundred bucks for the sand.
Hmm.
So, and now with the filters, four small, three, four small, instead of one giant, you don't have to like get in there and shovel it out.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Do it a little bit, it's still very expensive to have someone come into it.
Oh, yeah.
DPW can, could do it. I just did a class and I was watching them do that on one of the things, so it's very interesting actually. Yeah.
I know, just getting that out of my will, one is a pain in the butt.
Hmm.
Can't imagine a huge one.
I don't wanna do it, especially cause there's stuff in there that if you shovel, if you're too aggressive, it breaks.
Yeah, right, exactly, there's like pla- the plastic thing on the bottom.
Yeah. Like, use wet dryback or something to like get in there and get some of that stuff, but it's pretty gross, so it's definitely causing issues, you've got a cost of more issues if we don't replace it, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a minor thing if we get on top of it and do it every two, you know, two, three years, whatever, you know, it will be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like changing the oil in your car.
Exactly, it's, oh, it's, it's just, it's just an old car that's been sitting a little too long.
You gotta do it.
Mm-hmm.
That was fun.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah, thank you for your attention to all these issues, you know, spring started off fast and just never stopped, so.
Still going.
Yeah, huh.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else for us, or?
Well, I know that we were gonna talk about the. Employees with the, uh, rec department that had to get talked about tonight. So I got some input and I thought would be a good idea to share it.
She's talking, I'm like, what are you talking about?
Uh.
I don't know.
During the highlights.
That, that brings, that answers my question, why are you kidding?
Me.
I think, maybe not.
I assume, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming for this, cause, yeah, I.
Happy to.
Talked with Mindy a little bit about that.
Yeah, I got some more information too from like Primex and I wanted to do my due diligence and cover every aspect.
Good luck.
So.
There's so much, no.
Well, cause I spoke with like NH, uh, NA, NH. Um.
NHMA.
The National Parks and Rec Association, and they, this is just something that they don't hear about ever, so I was like, okay.
That's weird.
So I talked to, um, Milford, Peterborough, Ringe, Amherst, they do it the same way that we've been doing it. But when I spoke with Primex.
Okay.
What's, is that the, um?
So that's the original email and then it's the one from Primex, and that's just something they said, make it helpful.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, but honestly, what I'm gonna say, I, I talked to Derek and I, I was, uh.
Okay.
From a liability standpoint, obviously they're leaning into it, my.
Derek, I'm thinking that.
My concerns are.
Thank you.
Um.
So just, just so everyone knows that's listening.
What we're talking about.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is, we're still.
Hires.
So our referees are going to be going from ten ninety-nine, something like subcontractor to an employee of the town. Is basically what was requested, and so I wanted to make sure, cause we're gonna lose a lot of people with this. Employees have to be over fifteen, that's half my, half my, uh, referees for basketball. We have a very strong program that other towns use our kids for, that are also ten ninety-nines, including Antrim. Uh, actually, which is funny, cause they do pay them the same way, um, cause they borrowed from us last year, um. A lot of our kids that go through our junior patch program start when they're thirteen and fourteen years old, so they won't be able to work for us, you know, which means less people to cover games. There's adults that don't wanna be employees of the town. So we'll lose some, like, really important people that help our program, so that's a bit of an issue, um, to consider. Um, but if it is, I will be definitely the biggest department of employees, which is a concern for me because. I didn't sign on to have thirty people working under me, they, like a contractor where a coordinator's. Dealing with that is one thing and they handle the training and all that stuff. It's one thing, but if they're. And they handle the training and all that stuff, it's one thing, but if they're, I, like my responsibility, that changes my position a lot. And that makes me a little nervous too, um. And then also like the loss of the employees that we're gonna have to now not use, even kids that worked last year, now they don't qualify to work for us, so.
How old were they last year?
There, some of them, they can, you can take the program at twelve, and then we start them off with like the first second grade teams or doing like the scoreboards.
What's gonna be?
What?
If the labor law says they can't work under fourteen.
Under fourteen.
Well, they have to have a s- the school sign off on for them and.
How can? No, I know, so the school has to sign off on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
These kids just do the training and then, I don't know, they do the, that's.
But.
I, I could be wrong about the age, but they take the class, there's, there was one guy that was twelve that took it last year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do they, how do they offer class to kids under, yeah, fourteen's okay, Primex said.
They could be thirteen, fourteen. Yeah.
Fourteen and a half.
But not thirteen.
I think we have one thirteen year old last year, but I think he just did scoreboard, so he made, yeah, he made a couple bucks, like maybe fifty. He was also a basketball player, so he didn't, like, he wasn't there much. But, um.
So, I, I do have a question though, so like, how much are these, I'm talking about the adults who don't wanna pay taxes, like.
Hmm. Well, it's not that I don't wanna pay taxes, they just don't wanna be employees.
But, I mean, they're gonna, like, why, is, they're gonna make what, two hundred bucks for the season or something, tops, maybe?
It's more of that. Right, well, it like goes both ways, why would you put, put someone on as an employee for two hundred bucks?
Like, what's? Cause we get to cover our butt.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Some people just might not want that as part of their paperwork.
Right, like I said, one of, uh, there's a police officer, there's CO, there's people that have jobs and they just, per, it's their personal choice. But they, they know that they do not wanna be an employee, so it's, it is what it is.
Yes, up until two thousand, last year, two thousand and fourteen, it was okay, the law changed.
In twenty-four?
Went into effect March of two thousand and twenty-four, so that's where this all came off, because yes, I agree, and. It would be much easier all the way around to just pay.
Ten ninety-nine.
Ten ninety-nine people, like, it's gonna be a lot of work for me too to do that, but.
Especially some of these kids, they do the class, we hire them and then they don't work, like, ever, so.
So this, this first email that I have from uh Sarah Freeman.
Yeah.
Um, says that even, you know, if they're compensated like a reasonable fee, that, pretty vague on what reasonable is.
Exactly.
Yeah, um, but then doesn't, doesn't explicitly say uh that they have to be an employee, but they'd be a volunteer of the town. But doesn't give the guidelines of pay, like how you pay them, you know, cause we'd still consider them a volunteer.
And that's where. That's what Primex said, look at number five on that list.
For Carol.
Okay.
And that's the one that they have the hardest time saying that. They should not, they should be an employee and they should not be a contractor.
Which one are those?
On the second page.
Uh, second page, number five.
Number five.
Where it's a molten self.
Well, that's IRS guidelines, but that's under independent contractor, this is talking about volunteers, what Sean was referring to.
Correct. Oh.
That they could stay as a volunteer status even though they're being paid.
Oh.
Exactly, so it just depends on how we wanna do it and, but it's something that.
So this is that last one.
It tells me, we should look at. And change practices.
Hmm, an individual who volunteers to provide periodic services on a year-round basis. May receive a nominal monthly or annual stipend or fee without losing the volunteer status.
Yeah, there's a lot, and. Nobody comes right out and says, do it this way, and yes, other towns do it different ways, but we need a contract if they're gonna get paid. With ten ninety-nines, that they're signing off, but then the liability, we don't, Primex said, we're not covered. Unless they have their own insurance.
Well, the liability would cover anyone that is at our fields or anything like that anyway.
How are they listed now?
They're just listed as a ten ninety-nine contractor.
They get paid through accounts payable versus through payroll, so there's no taxes taken.
Versus payroll, right.
So, why wouldn't they fall under volunteers? And for that matter, our, it's not, reading this, it sounds to me like our firefighter is good too.
No, they're saying that you can do two part-time volunteer things for the same municipality. It doesn't make you lose your volunteer status if you're a firefighter and a.
Coach or whatever thing.
Coach, yeah, right.
Wow.
I guess I don't know what the expanded um definition of stipend is, you know, like.
So they're not, they wouldn't be stipend either, they're not considered stipend.
It says reasonable benefits.
I think what the labor laws are trying to do is get away from employers more than probably employees. Paying social security and Medicare.
Mm-hmm, they, they want everybody to pay it, not just.
They want everybody to pay it.
So, so if.
I know, cause they've drained the pot, it's like.
Yes.
Right, so they.
Spent it on a crap and have it, more money, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Right. Correct, so.
So if they can change the law and have that, and have people as employees versus contractors, then. It's the taxes that kick in.
That's basically what Primex said today, when we were on the phone with them.
Yes. Right.
The reason they changed the law was because if you ten ninety-nine someone, they're the ones paying the taxes. But if you have them as an employee, the town pays the tax and the employee pays, pays the tax.
So, remove the word employee and then keep the same scenario with the term volunteer, it's, cause we can pay them as a volunteer.
That's an um, yeah.
Through AP or through payroll.
I didn't do a deep dive into it, but just on this first page.
So this is what we're talking about though, it's, it's not so much employee versus volunteer, it's more, is it through payroll?
Yeah.
Or is it through. A- accounts payable. Cause accounts payable, if you pay them through accounts payable, there's no taxes taken out of them, they get, they get a ten ninety-nine.
No, I know, so if you pay them through payroll and they're still a volunteer.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but.
Is that?
That does nothing.
It does, volunteer can be reimbursed.
Aggressive, a lot of it.
Right.
It can be reimbursed.
For their time, for their meals, for expenses, their mileage, et cetera, et cetera.
And it doesn't say that they.
And reasonable benefit.
And reasonable benefit.
And it explains reasonable benefit after that.
Says.
Do you agree?
Group insurance plans, pension plans, or length of service awards commonly or traditionally provided to volunteers of state or local government agencies.
So there's a lot of flexibility there.
So as a volunteer, would the, they still be able to work at the current ages that they've been working at volunteering?
Mm-mm.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then they just.
Not under thirteen.
Not under fourteen.
Not under fourteen, thirteen year olds.
Thirteen year olds can volunteer.
That's not what Primex told us today though, so.
Right.
But the third, but the, that was as a, that was as a subcontractor, they're talking about volunteers, that's a different.
She told us volunteers too today.
She said anything.
Anything.
No thirteen year olds, the end. Bringing on support staff under the age of thirteen, regardless of the category.
So they can be thirteen, just not under thirteen.
I actually was gonna question that, cause she did say.
Yeah, she, on the phone, she said under fourteen.
She said under fourteen. But they all kind of said, if we have an employee, an attorney that. Might be the safest way to get legal advice from. Who are we use for employee stuff? But yeah, they need to be paid and we just don't know which way we're supposed to be given it.
And again, regardless if you pay them as a volunteer or an employee, you're still paying it out of payroll and they'll still get the taxes taken out.
Yeah, but you don't have to be, is what I'm saying.
If it's reimbursed, but, but re.
You reimburse on an agreed upon sum, that is what it is. I mean, if you reimburse with Snicker bars, then. A bag of Snickers bars is part of the agreement, if it's fifty bucks to ump a game, why would that have to go through payroll?
So. Like in or- order for it to qualify for the volunteer status, like that fee cannot be to compensate or be tied to productivity. It is not a substitute for compensation, but I think you have to kinda like go through this a little bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you on that.
And really see, cause as usual, we get more information and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it keeps going.
Everybody disagrees with everybody and.
And everybody interferes it differently, you know, and that's.
Right.
And then we have other.
And then they put words like reasonable.
Yeah, exactly, and that is the thing, can you be most specific?
Kind of they wanted to do, but.
Yeah.
Well, and we have to keep in mind, Primex is every, pretty much everybody's insurance in New Hampshire, we're the only town that's like talking about doing this.
No other towns that you've talked to are, have even considered.
Not one. And like I said, New Hampshire Municipal Parks and Rec Association has no idea what I was talking about, and this is the director of it that I talked to today.
So every town pays their park and rec?
W through, getting the W nine from them.
Through accounts payable.
Just their little stipends.
They're, it's, it's, yeah.
It's through accounts payable and they get a ten ninety-nine.
It's through, yeah. Everybody, I, I, like I said, I even, I called Primex too to just do due diligence, I wasn't coming in here to just be like, I don't care what you wanna do.
Yeah, no, I, it's just.
It's, so I made sure that, and he said what you guys are saying from Primex, that that's insurance, so I understand their point too, hundred percent. But whether they're on a field, under the volunteer part or employee part, no matter what, they are covered under our insurance. Because they're on the, the park, they're at the park, period, anyone that gets hurt.
All I wanna do is have fun.
They ju- they just wanna play soccer right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that cover is covered.
So, Carol's HR.
Right.
Carol's HR.
Carol's HR.
It's, it's got nothing to do with insurance.
Yeah.
This Carol, Carol doesn't have anything to do with the insurance side of it, she doesn't even do the insurance, she does HR.
Carol was HR, she was just.
And I was saying from the insurance side, I will, again, I'm just looking at it from like liability, because that's where.
Right. Right.
I live.
Yeah.
You guys live over here and that's what you were doing, I'm just coming in with what I had, which actually, that information only hurts me, my cause.
Right. Yeah.
Cause they agreed, I don't, you know, I'm just saying, this is what I have, I've been looking into this since it first got brought up, I've found nothing. And then I had, we started the season and I, there was no decision made by the board, so I had to continue with the way we have it. I've gotten, finally gotten everybody ten ninety-nines, not cash at all, and now I just need to, they need to get paid until we make a decision, so.
But we also need contracts to pay them, not by.
Right.
Right, which is something I, again, was, the, today was the first time I heard about contracts, so.
Um.
Last she, Peterborough was that, that's.
Yeah, but that's what Peterborough does, not us, so that's what I'm saying, unless it's something that's changed here, I need to know from you guys, do I get contracts?
But isn't that, wasn't that why Peterborough can do the ten ninety-nine is because they had a contract?
No, I didn't do this, no, she just does it, when I talked to Julia today, because I did take, I had a break to, I had a couple breaks during class. So one of the breaks, I called Julia and she was at work and I asked her, and she said, the reason she did a contract, she saw a com- uh, a municipality down in Tennessee. And that's what they did and she liked it, that's why she does it, and she's a sports coordinator over in Peterborough.
Yeah.
It wasn't because she was told to by the director or the town or anybody, it's just what she liked, she liked the idea of having a contract.
Have you ever had an issue with? You know, that would make so, hey, we need a contract.
No, I mean, cause.
Have you ever had someone say, hey, that's not what you said?
No, because I don't say it, the coordinators say it, I have two coordin- I have a soccer team and they, they tell, they tell them, the refs, what they're getting paid.
But you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They know what the, the guidelines are.
And we see them come through here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I actually, because uh Debbie had brought up, it was vague on a lot of the players, they got paid more than the other two. There's, there's a breakdown of how they get paid if they're reffing alone, if they're center, if they're sideline. For, that's just soccer, and then basketball's different, it's tiered based on what school you're prob- uh, how mu- how many years you've been doing it too, we're not gonna pay. Well, first of all, we're not gonna send anyone for a white, cause you know, we're nice people, but.
So what are your, what are the concerns that you have?
Legal.
That we could be flagged with.
So.
Yes, that they're coming after towns and.
Does.
Has there been any towns that they've come after?
I don't know, that's what the last sentence or one of the sentence in that email from Carol is that they are targeting New Hampshire towns.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is the IRS.
So when, so when Carol, when we talked to Carol, you know how we have workers comp and liability and all that kind of insurance?
Yeah.
If social security, medicor- Medicare come down in, with the hefty fines, that is not paid by Primex, that has to be paid by the town.
Department of Labor.
Cause that is not covered if we violate Department of Labor laws, so she said. How, however you do it, if they do come down on the town, then you're on your own, cause Primex does not cover that for any, any town.
But even that contract aspect that we're kinda floating, like just those things that you spoke to, like the different tiers and the different responsibilities, that's a framework for a contract, like it's just.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is how you could be compensated throughout the season and.
The only thing that's missing right now is a signature on that, I, it's written up, they, the kids know what it, like. The adults know because they've been doing it, the adults that we still have doing it, have been doing it upwards of fifteen years, so they all know what goes on.
Yeah.
And then Bobby with basketball specifically, and Joe with soccer specifically.
Yeah.
They he, they, he, they explain, and some of these kids have been doing it for years, so they already know the tiered system for basketball, they know the system.
No, what I'm saying is like that contract doesn't sound like it'd be that difficult to even draw up to cover it that way.
Yeah, we need, we need it right.
But then it doesn't sound like it's gonna be like cold water long-term, but until other towns or the state gives better guidelines on what we're supposed to do. Cause it, yeah. And it's hard, cause you hate to discourage volunteerism, it's kind of, you know, what they're aiming at, like in all these things kinda just take.
Right, correct, exactly, exactly.
The joy out of everything and like even being able to have volunteers, welcome to put up that playground set, like, that could be a community building activity and.
Exactly. Yeah. Right. Right.
You know, that's lost, and that's why so many people are just split these days, you know.
And it kind of, I mean, you know, we, there's, I mean, look at where all our committees and stuff and, and events like we have, there's no one volunteering.
Hmm. Right.
So then, the other thing that this would do is um, it would increase the workload on both of them.
Second joke. Yeah, right, exactly.
And the administrator who is overseeing all of that weekly. So, it's like not a, I don't know, New Hampshire's constitution says they're not allowed to do unfunded mandates.
I mean, so that's the thing, I mean, we just need to figure out, do all these other towns know that this law changed and they have to be.
How would they not though, no one knows, if you guys believe, I mean.
Right, I don't know, well, I mean, you didn't know.
No, I'm saying, including like the association, yeah.
You know, and I'm not saying that in a bad way, I'm just saying like if you're not, if you're not on top of it.
They're not telling anyone, so that's my whole thing is like, well, they're not even like reporting to the people who need to know.
You have to. You periodically have to look at the department or.
I got emails at Milford, and that's how I knew.
Oh, okay.
But Milford still does a ten ninety-nine, so.
Mm-hmm, so.
I mean, I just talked to the director today too, so.
The school.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the school and municipality do things differently, that's just the way it is.
But the law is the law, I mean, uh, um, believe me, I would prefer to stay.
Yeah, much easier for everyone, yeah.
Much easier, it's just you.
I think the school's a little bit different too, cause the, the ages of the kids that are playing, like you get to that point of, yeah, and you need the older officials and.
It's like, you make that decision.
That will, the whole structure is a bit different.
But that's just how I knew the law was going into effect.
It sounds like you can make the decision that they're continuing volunteers and this, all this doesn't apply. And business is normal until this clarification says that they're not volunteers, they have to be employees, but from everything I've heard so far, it. It's not clear enough to say that you have to make them employees, um, you can still treat them as volunteers and you can still do the same thing we're doing now.
So I mean, my, you know, you're you're talking in circles, the next step is gonna be getting an interpretation, which is just gonna take the whole bit deeper. My my suggestion is just, business is normal until we hear otherwise.
Is this hearing otherwise?
Yeah.
Right.
No, this is what the question that's put before us is, is this hearing otherwise? Cause I don't, I'm off the same line and I'm, I would.
I'll.
From this chair. I say, if none of the other towns are doing it, why would we be the first to jump on board to increase our accounting budget? Increase the workload on the rec director and.
It adds no value for anybody.
For anybody.
Except social security and Medicare.
Exactly.
So I I know it might be.
Exactly, right.
Right.
That would be my uh this is, it may or may not be, it's a year old.
And I'm more than happy to drop a contract for.
And then categorize it as a tip.
Well, however, it says in here with volunteers, they can be compensated.
Yeah.
There's no question about it, with a stipend or a fee, and not lose their volunteer status.
But. So do you pay volunteers from payroll or AP?
AP, we always do it out of AP, don't we?
So far.
That's.
I mean, they're really the only volunteers of the, right?
Yeah.
Well.
We don't have any other volunteers that get paid.
Well, we have s- the stipend.
That's different.
All my stipend, but that I did wanna say too, anyone that is stipended, like coordinators, they're all through.
Payroll.
They're already all through payroll.
Right, right.
But they also make more money than any of these kids are gonna make. If any of these kids even get close to them, I'm gonna send a rep, so.
Right. So what's the difference between them and the volunteer firefighters that got?
Right.
We're ballot clerk.
What did he say?
We're ballot clerk.
Ballot clerks.
Yeah, ballot clerk is possible.
These are just all, and again, it'd be easier for me to do it.
And the ballot clerks are all through payroll.
But they don't get taxed.
They're all through payroll, so are firefighters.
Ballot clerks don't get taxed.
Cause they do.
Cause they make like six bucks.
Right.
Yeah.
They're left off.
They don't make enough to get taxed.
No money's coming out of there.
Well, and the firefighters only get, you know, start out at thirteen something.
Yeah.
And they only have, they don't have, one of them, what is it, that they don't have taken out of their check. It's like many or something.
But the difference, I think, is um none of these other. Departments, boards, whatever you, they don't have kids as an integral part of their volunteer system.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, yeah.
And now if you introduce kids, now you're in. As an employee, um well, first off, you run flat into our non-signed employee manual. You smash into that thing and then you smash into labor laws for employees, whole different category in my mind, and I'm not a lawyer, so maybe it's not.
Well, then there's like oversight on employees too for me. I mean, I'm stuck, let's be clear. We all know I don't work fifteen hours for a rec a week. It's a little much, but I am stipend there and adding this on, I'm gonna be now responsible for more employees that are not adults. I'm responsible only during pool season for an extra thirteen to fifteen, depending on what we look at in that season. But now it's gonna be more almost year round that I'd be responsible for. I mean, soccer's a little bleak right now for refs, but basketball season, there's. I don't know, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, depending on who has time to come and rough.
I don't understand how the responsibility changes too much.
Yeah, cause you're gonna get all the paperwork.
I mean, the paperwork a lot is gonna do, and and that's if they stay.
All the forms.
But you have adult coordinators that oversee those kids working anyways.
If they stay, cause they would also have to be taken on and put as employees. So it's, they might not stay, so then it would fall on me. And then I now I have to figure out how to organize.
Well, without that contract, you know, there's always disaster scenarios to everything, but um.
The refs. Yeah. Right now, we have a really solid program when it comes to the ref, the ref trainings, all those things. If this goes into play, I know at least. The training portions are gonna probably go away.
So the contract aspect, Mary, does that make things more stable, like in your eyes or?
I don't know the answer to that. I just saw it when when you hit forward to be the tax that they do it and some of the stuff. Yeah, um there are contracts that they recommend and.
Yeah.
If somebody is a contractor that they, we should have something filled out.
Yeah.
Which is fine, I can definitely put something in there. Julia, four.
Do you consider them a contractor? That's the question. If you're considering them a contractor.
Well, that's the whole thing.
Now you're into the IRS rules. But if you, if they're considered a volunteer.
Or if they're a volunteer or correct. Yes.
Perhaps you're not into the IRS rules.
You sell a volunteer contract.
Well, and.
But if you do the contract, you read them stipulations and you can't have.
Well, you have volunteer form, but not a contract. It's a form, that's it.
Yeah.
When, when we were talking to Carol today at Primex, she was saying that, like, if you're paying like a company, like the Mil- is it Milford or?
Yeah, like Milford does goes through their association.
Yeah.
NCA. Cause all sports are run through, it's Milford, but it's run through NCAA, I think is the name of it.
Yes, but that puts them in a different group, right.
But they're still, it's still Milford, the checks that comes from Milford.
Correct, but the association is.
Right.
One that pays all of it.
If all of these kids.
It is the one that pays it, not.
If all of these kids were under one person and we paid that one person and then that one person would be responsible for frowning over the paperwork.
It would be a world of fun.
No, it would be responsible for all of them. But that would be, we, I mean, you have to find a company, which they don't exist, because this doesn't exist in any town.
Correct. Well, does it Milford?
It's still, the organization is the Milford Athletics. It's still Milford cutting the checks.
Right. Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
But they're not operating under the umbrella of the town.
Right.
They are, yeah.
They're operating as a contractor.
The director said that he does not oversee it, but his, the rec is run through that, but it's still paid through from what the guy who gets the check. It's from Milford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, I, this sounds like a not bad arrangement, because then.
Exactly.
So you wouldn't be coming to our meetings anymore if you had something like that. You would have your association that is running all of this stuff.
There you go, do an LLC.
And then the town would just be. Cutting a check to.
You're not.
That's that's a rabbit hole.
Is there a second to that?
Oh my god. Like, see, how many more businesses do I have to open?
No, but here's the thing, the rec department in my mind is already halfway there with the revolving account. In my mind. I mean, you are huge.
Yeah.
How many sub-members are underneath you? And then you you have this whole revolving account where you're.
Mm-hmm, pretty much self-funding.
Mostly self-funding. You're already ninety percent of the way to being an association. And then you go talk to a lawyer and come back to me and you'd be like, oh no, we weren't even ten percent of the way. It cost us seven hundred thousand dollars to do that. Yeah, no. It is a rabbit hole, but something to tuck in the back.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so you're gonna.
Definitely not after today.
Carry on as is until proven otherwise.
I think so, like. Do you have anything to add to the conversation though?
No.
No.
What do you have thoughts? Should we just tell them they gotta go everything on payroll or should we wait or what?
Um, one, wait and two, um, they leave enough uh open space from what I've read. Uh about the volunteer, that we just basically stay the same way we're we're doing.
If anything, change the forms to make sure that the word volunteer is in there.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And the other thing you have, so there's one form for fifteen year olds, I believe, and then there's another one for sixteen and seventeen year olds. There, I had sent the malt to Shauna and the pool stuff. And I sent her a Dropbox link, but I'll send them, cause uh any anyone under seventeen has to have those forms filled out, so.
There's the parental.
One of them is and then the other one's something else, I forget.
I was gonna say the.
But I'll send them to you tomorrow.
There's one that the school's supposed to sign off on, but only if there, it's during school hours.
Send them and then the parental.
Right, right.
Yeah, so in the summertime, they don't have to sign off on the stuff at pool. So we'd need that from, if they were employees, we'd need them. That's it.
Right. Is that volunteers too?
Yeah, but volunteers because they.
We can, we can figure that out.
Are some schools require volunteers, some programs, some athletic programs, um girl scouts, boy scouts. Eagle scouts, they all require volunteers and I've never gotten paperwork from anybody. The only thing I've ever done is community service stuff. That's it. It's the only time I've signed off on anything from any of the kids. I, there was one kid that brought me the letter, but it was during summer, so she didn't end up needing the letter from the school.
Would it be a, you have this draft of a agreement?
It would take me a minute to make it look like a formal look.
To make it look as a volunteer service.
Mm-hmm.
Um compensated reasonably.
Well, I mean, we have the volunteer forms.
Well, they're just, that's almost like an application though. I don't know if that would be.
No, it's not an application.
Yeah, it's.
No, no, I said it's more like an application, the volunteer form.
Mm-mm. It's I volunteer for blah 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 and, yeah, I'll send it to you. I'll send that to you.
So.
This would be different.
You.
Could be different, maybe.
Are we going to set a a lower, what's the lowest age um?
Fourteen.
Twelve.
Do I hear ten? I'm buying ones.
Can we hear?
No. I mean, we have volunteers that don't get paid that are younger during, especially during pool season, cause they assist the guards. Um it's part of their swim team requirements is to help volunteer. So I don't know. They don't get compensated, um because they have to save us money, um by having them volunteer and help with the programs, also getting to know the kids and stuff. So we can scoop them up and hire them when they're of age. Um.
But anybody that falls into the adult age needs to be on payroll?
Depends what they're, I wouldn't think so.
I don't think they'd stay, certainly not.
They're still a volunteer.
Well, yeah.
If they're a volunteer.
So this guy comes in, four, five games, refs, five basketball games.
Yeah. If you're refereeing, you're refereeing between sixteen and sixty.
In my mind, it sounds to me like this CFR five five point one oh six.
Sorry, I've read so many of them.
I know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it sounds like.
Sounds like there's latitude to leave it the way it is and maybe strengthen it in some ways and have an agreement.
Put together a volunteer form.
Yeah.
Make it, put the numbers in for this year, have them sign off on it when they take their class, maybe if they pass. I can have a part of the class for at least moving. I mean, I bring them to the field for the soccer program, cause it is a different, it's a different layout, it's a different game. And then for the refs, they have to come back to do refreshers, the veterans, and then any new ones coming in. I can just have them sign off on the form and should we get parental consent also on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so parental consent, them, myself, and then bring them to you guys, if they're under eighteen, parental consent. And then you've got, you can sign, then sign off on it. I just wanna make sure I'm having, I have enough lines for everybody to sign.
Yeah.
So, okay, I think I can, I can draft something and then you can review it.
Okay.
In the meantime, though, for soccer, we're in this, here we, we're in it.
Yeah, there's no uh, you know, bombs, so to speak, you know, like that we have to change anything tonight, I don't think, or.
No problem.
Yeah, uh, I don't know. Not to me. Loop. Soccer, like continue like as we've done.
Continue the way this should, yeah.
Yeah, they'll look to um improve practices.
Sure.
Going forward, try to come within compliance of these regulations. And not do it in a way where um, you know, we lose anybody, you know, volunteering or discourage anybody from volunteering.
Yeah.
Um, you know, cause like to that aspect of the social security, Medicare is being pitched as a benefit to these people that don't want it. So it's like another thing, like why are you trying to shove this down our throat if we don't want that aspect?
Yeah. Well, my son's a good example. He got pulled in as an employee because, well, I was told to pull him as an employee, so we did. We went through the paperwork. He hates it. So if he has other work, he'll go work somewhere else instead of here, cause he doesn't get to take the taxes taken out, cause he's ten ninety nine. When he does other work. So it's, it is, it does go to show, he wants, he does some things just to make mom happy. When I need the help, you know, with certain things and camps and stuff like that, but he will, he would prefer to go work somewhere else, because he gets ten ninety nined. That falls under his parents to pay the taxes on, not him. So he has the full pay, we pay the taxes for him at the end of the year.
See, and the amount of money that these kids are making though, is like, like how much taxes are even, some of them don't make enough to even have the taxes taken out.
Well, that'd be, that's how bad the system is right now at the top, like how much they need the money, you know, like trying to take money from kids and like wherever they can get it.
No, I I get that. I understand that. I resent it.
That's the part that's. I mean, it makes it kinda sad, because like you start taking money out of, away from the kids.
Right.
I mean, it's kinda gross, but I don't, it's.
And the level of benefit that you, if you get there and get anything, you're lucky, you know.
I mean, that's the thing, it's like, are we, are we gonna get it?
Yeah.
We don't know when the floor's gonna drop. And then I can, can't guarantee that to a fourteen, fifteen year old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, so I think, does that give some clarification right now?
You guys tell me what I'm supposed to do and I'll do it any way you want me to do it.
Uh, status quo for now?
Okay.
And then we'll look to, you know, strengthen things going forward.
Yeah, I'm gonna draft.
And do it and find that hopefully a a path forward that is good and not gonna get us in trouble too.
That's really all.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that.
That's the only issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a feeling that New Hampshire's gonna get blown up pretty bad though, if it does, they do decide to start doing this, because.
Yeah.
Well, everybody'll adjust, you know.
We'll pivot, but yeah, I just, my whole thing, if we were gonna do it honestly, if it was gonna move forward any any other way, it's just time. Like best off soccer season, right, like we've already started, it's not really the best time to start changing it. I might lose the three refs I have.
Yeah, well.
I don't wanna do that, so if we had to do this, it would be stirring up the for.
But sometimes that happens and you just gotta keep on.
Just let me, like I said, I just need to know what I need to do.
Well, right now, I think we.
Changing the volunteers, not contractors, cause.
But they're still ten ninety nine, right? Right? So ten ninety nine volunteer, like I mean, I just wanna make sure I clarify it to them, right, too.
How, you guys spend more time reading these things than us.
Yeah. Yeah.
So however you do that.
It depends on how you want to interpret it.
Yeah, we would like it to be inter- we would like it to be.
And that's basically what professionals say too, is like.
Kinda like the RSAs.
Exactly.
We would like it to be interpreted that these are volunteers, given a reasonable benefit.
Yes.
Yes.
I, however that works best.
I would really, actually, do you have an extra copy? So I wanna quote that.
The ten ninety nine.
I sure do.
I don't think that's part of any law, it's just a lawyer's language.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Maybe. Maybe it's part of the law, I don't know.
They don't wanna commit either, because.
Right.
That that's the problem, don't say it really shouldn't be this.
The thing is, is if they really commit to something, then a lot of attorneys lose jobs, cause it's not arguable anymore.
That's.
It's, you gotta make it so that it's a little flexibility in there.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seek an employment attorney.
That's what it's about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome, so.
Well, we're not the only ones operating this way right now, so, you know, there's bigger municipalities.
I really ev- ever usually like to use that argument.
Yeah, but.
Cause I don't care what other people are doing, but.
Uh, I get it, but at the same time, you can, yeah, see it that way in this case.
Just seeing this, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, if there's something that we have to pivot and do something moving forward, we'll figure it out. We always do. It's fine. Um, I just, like I said, I just need like clarification and I need the board to tell me what I was doing.
Well, and I would like to not increase the workload on.
Everybody.
Marginally paid people.
Everybody?
Yeah, right.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. I was, it was something I was in the back of my head, and so I appreciate that you were thinking of that too, cause that is a lot of work.
It's a ton of work.
To process that many people.
If it has to be at least three, it's just.
Right, we have to do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Do orientation and get them all in a room together and do it once, that's how you do it.
Right, right, yep. I'd love to see everybody in the same room at once.
That's how you do it.
Yeah, be careful what you wish for.
Right.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mindy.
Parks and Recs.
Thanks, man. Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go celebrate now. Cause I passed.
You passed the class?
I did.
Oh, good, good job.
I'm so happy.
Good.
Fifteen hours, two tests, yes.
Nice, congrats.
Congratulations. There, gotcha. Good night.
Bye, you'd be so proud of me. You just wait.
Very good.
Have a good night, guys, thank you.
Alright. Alright, and then.
That is ending.
So, what?
That's not public.
Oh, it's not public?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Alright, okay. Alright, so Jason, I interrupted you, um, old new business.
Thank you.
Hmm, oh yeah, stop signs, speed signs.
Yeah.
We already did, uh.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just looking at it, it's been almost a month since I've been here. So pass on the.
Lou Lou.
What's it?
Yeah.
Good.
So.
I'm good.
I haven't had a chance to read the minutes or watch the video of the meeting that I was missing, but did anything happen on the public hearing or timber talk?
Yeah, we move forward.
Yep, one and done, do it.
One and done?
Yep.
Is it going forward now?
Ten minutes.
Yeah, well, now with the, you know, loss of those two employees, I don't know if it's gonna, I, I don't know how that impacts his schedule, but yeah.
And then.
It was supposed to, it was at um, that meeting, he had stated that it'd be done before winter.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
And they're just gonna try to combine the paving when they did um Old Wolden, so when they were out there and paved that, they would do, man.
Yeah.
Where was Old Wolden, the mess after that thunder shower we had the other day?
Hmm.
Oh man, my driveway's still.
There's a lot of driveway, there's a lot of rocks in the street.
There's a lot of rocks in the road, yeah.
Yeah, Old Wolden, the, the uh, the mud got about four or five inches deep.
Oof.
Yeah.
I was on my way home.
I haven't been there forever.
It's all ground up right now or what?
I don't know, it didn't drive out that way, the uh.
No, I mean, Old Wolding Road, what's the progress on it, is it, are they working?
Where about?
Is there a base coat or is it?
Um, they're not doing anything there, cause they ended up um, uh, changing or doing um, um, more culverts. I think he, who was it that he ordered, uh, that Peter ordered?
Oh, yeah.
Seven, another seven hundred feet.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Of, of one culvert.
That was already done.
That was all done, wasn't, wasn't that already all done?
Yeah.
No.
Seven hundred?
We paid the bill for it, I hope it was done.
That's a lot.
And because what they were doing is they uh, are taking three culvert pipes and um, uh, getting them into one forty-eight inch. That goes underneath the uh, forty-five and takes the water away from, from going down that hill.
What's the status of the pavement, did they mill it, is it still the old road, did they put a base coat?
It's still the old road, uh, it's still the old road.
So they haven't done any of that, okay.
With a couple of places where they put culverts going in, you know, across the road.
Yeah.
And um, uh, those are real rickety going over, cause they're just, you know, holding back.
Alright. There's no way for Mary to come back, that was one thing for her.
Did we ever hear anything on the uh Antique Fire Brigade land?
No.
I know they, I know they were going to um, the whole, I drove by it one night and like the whole antique, the whole uh firefighters association were all walking around it, so I don't know what they were doing.
There's that.
Oh, really? Awesome, so there's still a good interest there, but we, that attorney, it was Upton and Hatfield said that there's potentially.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Could we have looked into whether or not the deed would allow, is that what it was?
Something like that.
Is left and done?
I haven't looked at that in a while.
Let me see.
Hmm, I'll look into that.
Remember the deed saying that that building was supposed to be used with the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is um.
I think I wrote on an email.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, I thought it was one of those issues that had the unraveling of it, like right in, yeah, so look at it as an issue.
Right. I didn't know that.
Yeah, like the, the map to unravel it, like to correct it. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was only like, we only had like one, one or two steps to do in order to be able to.
The last I remembered, this guy was gonna look a little further into it.
Oh, yeah.
And add it, that sort of.
With the leaks in the pla- in the building or?
The deed.
Hmm, the deed, yeah, the Upton and Hatfield guy, I wonder if he never got.
Oh, the deed.
I thought, like with the fire department or the firefighter association being involved.
That that would.
Yeah.
Quite cleaned it up quite a bit.
Right.
If it did, then what are we waiting for?
Right. I don't know.
What are we waiting for anything?
I don't look into that again.
Yeah.
I can't remember now.
Then, uh, Mary.
It's been a hot month.
Mm-hmm.
If I may.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Doyle had asked for some account receivables, um, for the police details, um.
What do you want?
I don't have that request in front of me, Alan, do you?
Additional ones, additional, you want the checks and that's what you want?
Oh, you're gonna, are you the ones gonna provide now?
Sure.
Are you gonna create one or serve one?
Oh, accounts receivable.
Accounts receivable.
Accounts receivable.
So that would be Carleen, for how far, how far back are we talking?
Do you have one created is the question, huh?
Yeah, I'm getting them.
So we don't have one?
No.
We're preparing and then I don't need it. It was supposed to be started in twenty twenty-two. And we have no, I knew that wouldn't be happening.
Yeah.
That's why I requested it, cause I know every time I've requested it in the past, I've been pushed off to somebody and they said, I don't know anything about it. And now we got an accounting person and she's working on it with the police secretary, but there's nothing they've done in the last three years.
From when we spoke.
Hmm?
From when we spoke a few months ago, I.
Been working on it.
Jackie is sending them to me too and making sure that they're going into the correct accounts, but it's only a couple of months, so.
Okay.
Like the spreadsheet of what was invoiced.
But we do have.
How much we paid out and then what we received.
Accounts receivable.
Yes.
That's. I was asking you, Alan.
I'm sorry, what?
Like, almost like a spreadsheet of what was invoiced, how much we paid.
It's a, it's a account receivable. It's the, uh, among the things that have been invoiced, it's still had not been received. You told this committee you would prepare one starting in November twenty-two. And we were supposed to have maintained that ever since, along with a copy of every invoice coming from the police department to payroll to show that an invoice has been sent. Come to find out that they hadn't done it all.
So those were given to Carleen.
So there's no way of reconciling whether or not we've been paid for all of our police detail invoices without knowing what's still outstanding.
So the, those, those were all given to, all the invoices were given to Carleen?
I know they were, cause I talked to Carleen and Carleen has no idea what to do with them all, she knows that they were attached.
As they were, right. Right.
So the idea of creating an accounts receivable never happened, which means you have no way of knowing if we've ever been paid, if an invoice was even sent out.
Isn't that.
Which is what I found going through it before, and I presented this document before, that we have a number of invoices that were sent out, well, we were able to send out. There were billed through payroll, we don't know if an invoice was ever sent out, we certainly don't know if it was ever paid.
Wasn't that one of your ninety-one A requests, that you requested all the invoices that were sent out?
Yeah, we have this requested five years ago and we'd be doing it every year since.
I'm, I'm talk, yeah, I'm talking about very recently.
Yeah, no, we never got the accounts receivable.
So you have all the invoices.
And after five and a half years, I got to look at the actual invoices, but there's no way of knowing if they've been paid without an accounts receivable, which is the balance.
Okay.
That was the original request for the accounts receivable, to be able to reconcile all of it together.
Okay.
We simply wanted to know who was paid, I wa- I wasn't concerned about any officers that weren't paid, cause if they weren't paid, the town didn't lose any money. So I just wanted to know who was paid, was there an invoice sent out, was the invoice received?
The check received.
Hmm?
Check received? You said invoice received, do you mean check receiv- check, check received, yeah.
Pay, pay, some sort of check received. And we finally got that after five and a half years, got that information, but.
So you have all the information, you just haven't.
But uh.
I'm gonna excuse myself for a second. So Jackie now.
The accounts receivable now is only if I can, if we stopped getting information from the town at the end of June. I had to go through legal counsel to get that information, I sent you an email explaining, five and a half years, we've been, had to go through legal counsel to demand the information from ninety-one A, I don't wanna hear, is that all you requested? We've heard it for five years, I finally got the information after your police department had a number of weeks to fix it, actually a number of years to fix it. The one that I presented to the board of selectmen, especially, not so much, but the two of you at least, about missing documents and questionable invoices. Your response was, we can't move by just one piece of evidence, and your response was, we'll have Mike check in for that. Well, Mike's the lawyer of that particular case, and now after I finally got the information, that one invoice happens to be missing.
There's one invoice in particular?
It's not just one, I have names that are lined out, that they were paid, and then we were told it's not on the invoice, cause we didn't bill for it. Or they got paid by the town, you can't, that's the problem, that's the reason to get all these different bits, because you can't correct all of the materials at one time, you can't, it's impossible. So. That's why I asked for the accounts receivable, and uh, two weeks ago, no, beginning of July, I gave you the request for that. And in the minutes, and so they gave three requests, I actually gave you two, one was a year old request, it had never been filled.
Alright.
So, and I have two more that, well, now I can eliminate the accounts receivable request now, I know it doesn't exist.
Alright, and then uh, you had brought up earlier as well, uh, police detail guidelines that you had seen when you were, uh, in talking with Mary?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, I gave it to you, right?
Yep, and I gave it to Sean and Sean gave it to Alan, and he said that's not what he's, what he saw in your office.
But that wasn't.
That's not. What did you say in my office?
Yeah, uh, you showed me a police department guideline for police detail, of the ordinance, but the guideline.
Right.
So you felt you saw a different document in Mary's office?
I didn't, what did the document? She said that, uh, and she was working out with the police secretary, so.
And that was the second one that you, you said.
But since I can't ask her for anything, I have to ask you.
But, and that's not the case, Alan.
Huh?
That's not, I don't know when that changed, but like the agreement that I, that I left, that I left on.
There are the two officials in this, in this room.
If I could finish too, um, was that you're able to work with Mary, Carleen, um, whomever you needed to, like, to get the information that you wanted, but just to schedule that time with them. Here's that initial meeting went fine and well, um, though you didn't get everything that you're looking for, because of, of a time restriction. So then you came for another meeting with Mary, right, two meetings?
Two meetings.
Yep, and I never stopped that, like.
No, no, I didn't say you did.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I have been told that we cannot speak directly to your staff, meaning anybody in your staff.
From who and at what point?
Your town administrator, starting almost two years ago.
Well, no.
In fact, what, what.
We're past that though now, like we're, like we're onto that, like this other system and path, you know, specifically with um, the accounting clerk and the treasurer, um.
We were not allowed to speak to either, we tried to speak, but forget, well, when Roger was here.
No, I'm not going back to Roger.
Well, I wanna see, now you wanna say it's changed, this is what's happened in the last five and a half years.
Well, I'm talking about what's just happened over the last, the last few months.
But you know, I have spent more on an attorney. Last few months, I sent a request to you and we.
Because now you're trying to revert back to something that happened five years ago.
Mary immediately responded. We also sent a request through the attorney that eventually got to the treasurer, and for the past how many years, every request identical to that, that went to the town. Never got to the treasurer's office, cause when we spoke to the treasurer and showed what we were given from the attorney, it is like, this is not, I would never send this. That is not there at all, and I responded that in email, so requests going through s- specific.
So, so we're trying a different path, like as of three months ago or so, which seemed like it was working, where you did have access and the ability to schedule time with people in order to go through documents and get the information that you're looking for, this request for the police detail guidelines, there was confusion on it. And then you said you were told not to speak to anybody, which is inaccurate, holy.
Oh, I didn't say about that, in general.
Well, no, you said that about this, this specific, and that's not the case, this is not the case.
And I never said that.
But.
Okay, then, now I go, is it the board's opinion now that your citizens or taxpayers are allowed to discuss anything with employees? And are they allowed to respond and give information directly, or do we have to continue to pick, go through you?
I had not asked you just to go through, I've.
I didn't ask you, it's an account position, because your chief administrator for the town has told us otherwise, and as a result.
I have never said that, Alan.
Police, as a result, your previous accounting clerk refused, Roger's a great guy, but he will not do unless he's allowed to. We've run into that a number of times.
So he, uh, and he has a different person, a different scenario, I don't, I can't speak for Roger.
Same town administrator.
But.
Same two selectmen.
I know, so then it's funny that now.
Now we, I, I requested, I had to go through a formal request, she provided exactly what she, what she was after her.
Excellent.
No complaints at all, in fact, um, finally got a request.
And then, then you had complaints of the last two ones that you gave to me and tried to revert back to the, some other scenarios at, some other timeframe.
When we got the other request. To the treasurer. I came in before a meeting and said to you.
Hmm.
Hey, said how pray, how praised the treasurer's office, do you recall me doing that?
Absolutely.
That, because when they finally got the request, they responded fantastically with everything I could possibly want and more.
Well, that's great to hear, and that's what I said.
That's written, that's why I sent you.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying is that that's always the case, that's why I have to submit written to you.
So it's, it seems like there's a good, there seems like there's a good working relationship right now, and no reason for it not to continue to go forward.
Why you still say like?
Except for if you try to go back three, five, ten, fifteen years or whatever.
Not trying to go back.
Just since I've been here.
No, definitely.
Mm-hmm.
But if you keep trying to go backwards and then bring, you know, bring things up from the past, we can't ever, we can't ever move forward.
I'm trying to go back. Everything after we, after we have it in the time of all.
Cause you brought us back to the past a few weeks ago, so that scenario is working, you know, looking to schedule time with people and get information.
Okay.
There's never been a withholding, you know, from our perspective of information, yeah.
From your perspective, maybe the three gentlemen up there, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know, I, like I said, I can't speak for, you know, past employees and maybe.
Okay.
I just don't know, but I know that what we had going two, three months ago was working, and that is the last I knew until you handed me two other requests at the beginning of a meeting and said that something wasn't working, or we weren't fulfilling things or whatnot, I'd rather you speak to them directly, because then we get into these.
I just wanted to hear.
Telephone problems, we've been, been having telephone problems this whole time. Telephone problems, we've been, been having telephone problems this whole time, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And as to the uh, needing evidence, I believe that was in relation to allegations.
I'm sorry.
You looked at me and you said, you said you need more evidence, and that was in re- regards to allegations you were making that.
What I had asked you at the time.
That were far beyond ninety-one A's.
No, what I asked you at the time, was I, after getting partial information. That I presented to you some findings that I had, that there were obvious discrepancies, and I asked the board of selectmen to look into it. You said exactly, we'll have Mike check into it. You said, we can't move forward just based on this, I didn't ask you to arrest or fire anybody based on that piece of paper. I asked the board of selectmen to look into it, and to the best of my knowledge, you have not looked into it.
I know, the chairman has said, let's not go in the past, but for the record, we started off very much trying to accommodate you.
Now, the other.
When I sat down in that chair my first day, you came and you smacked down that ninety-one A and said, you better understand this thing, and I wanted to understand it.
Yes, I know.
And we tried, and we tried, and it seemed like every time we tried to accommodate, all we, can I finish speaking?
And when you. And when you sat at that chair. Yes.
It's impossible, I've come to the conclusion, it's almost impossible to satisfy. Whatever it is that drives you in these requests, I think we are obligated by law to do our best to satisfy your request. But I have come to that conclusion, you will not be satisfied.
I'm glad you have that conclusion, now when you moved to that chair, one of the things we came about with that findings was requesting the simple things, RSA ninety-one A. To be able to review the police documents, that's all we asked for.
Yeah. Yeah.
You said, well, I'll facilitate that, because you were the liaison.
And we tried.
And did we get, tried is the key word, nothing happened, I got a letter from the chief saying it's not even your property to give away, it's his. Then he made select copies and tried to, and charged me for them in that case. We didn't get anything from them, other than giving them a chance to redact their information. After a while, Lou became the police liaison, we had the same discussion in the public. Lou had the same attitude, let's move forward, and said, we will work and do something.
Yeah.
By the way, a great, but nothing ever came of that. No matter who we talked to, we only requested.
Well, I mean, maybe I'll be proven wrong, but I.
We only requested to view four things.
And I remember you having a stack of papers this thick, that you were reviewing.
Can I finish now? Can I finish now? Can, yes, and review only called, when we finally got to go to the police station, I asked the police secretary how much effort it took.
Yeah.
To pull these voluminous files that we hear continuously out of your town administrator. She said it took less than five minutes, because all she did was pick up the folder and set it in the conference room up there.
And I sat with you for eight and a half hours.
Excuse me, I finished. And sh- all she had to do was put it on the table.
Thought it was finished.
We went through it again, and she had to put it back, it took her a total of ten minutes. So your police department effort took only ten minutes.
And this is currently, within the last six months?
That's when I sat over there, but then.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, like, we're getting somewhere with all of this, and I don't know why, yeah.
And that's why I'm at, that's why we started with formal request to you, because one, it was, it had been demanded that it's in writing. And two, we're not allowed to ask directly.
And you keep saying that, and you keep saying that, and that's.
So we have to move, huh?
But if we can now, and you need stuff, and you've been there.
I'm allowed, I'm allowed to go directly to you.
Okay, then let's do that.
I'm allowed to co- contact you directly.
Abs- yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, but nobody ever, no- nobody ever told me that I needed to be over at one, a place, or that you were coming.
It's okay, I've, I've, I'm not, I'm not saying you've, I've gotten a lot of that, so.
So, I apologize.
We can't do anything, or we're going to do something. And now here we are, finally, after five and a half years of you taking over with transparency, we finally got it. The problem is, we've had five years to fix it, and it's already five years old, so there's a lot of it, can't go back, because the guys have moved on or whatever. So the only thing I could look at now was current stuff, but if I have to wait five more years to get current stuff, then.
You won't.
I, I know from you, but.
Alright.
So the, the thing about the police detail, there was a guideline page policy.
Don't tell me, like, you saw it with her, yeah, like.
Is it your policy?
That was when I asked you about that, Mary?
I don't know.
Yes, and that was.
He talks about.
Debbie, Debbie let her work it out with him, yeah.
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 Policy, and all I asked for was if that's the policy, would, can I have a copy of it?
And I sent it to you, you sent it to him, right?
Our policy.
I don't know what's on your phone right now, I just.
It was that second, it wasn't the.
Our policies, public records in your mind.
It was right after he came to the meeting and said he uh, he didn't ask for the ordinance, he asked for the policy, so the next day I asked Mary about it. I said, what did Alan see, you know, he said, talked about some kind of policy thing, and she said, this was the only thing I had. So I, she scanned it to me, I scanned it to you, and I thought he was sending that to him.
Mary, you uh, um, showed Debbie that as well.
I didn't really even see it, I mean, she scanned it to me, emailed it, and I just forwarded it to you. Yeah, that's, that's what I think, I appreciate, that's what it was, because it was on your cabinet there, and you said, this is the only other thing I don't think of.
I think so too, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that was the only, cause.
That's what, because then you said that's what Jackie sent to, yeah.
Please, from it's sent it to me because, actually, or my, yeah, it's one of the other.
Right. And it was the day after the meeting, so it was on a Wednesday. Do you want me to send it to Al- Alan now? Do you want me to send it to you now?
Not so too, well, not so much, I never, no, are, no, I, my question hasn't answered.
How can we refuse that? We can't refuse that.
Our policies, formal policies.
Mary, have I ever told you not to give him any piece of paper, ever, never, Joe, have I ever told you not to talk to Alan or give him nothing, like, never?
No, I.
Like, it ju- it doesn't happen, there hasn't been this lockout of things, and I don't know why. There's been confusion, but we're all in the room right now, and I'm glad that we're finally having this in public setting, and we can all tie up the loose ends and maybe. Get you the things that you're looking for, and that's all we've been working to do, and there has been a lot of work that's gone into it. If you could just hold one second while I um, look for this email and. So what was emailed wasn't what you just showed us, because that was the um, policy for accounting practices, like for the details. And this is the um, town ordinance for police details, but not the.
Right, so that was the first one, the ordinance was the first thing, because.
I never requested the ordinance.
Because.
No, 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 that's clear, yeah, I made that clear before, and I didn't understand the difference between the, like, two or what you had seen with her.
Right, right. But this, the day after the meeting where he said he didn't request the ordinance, there was something else in her office, I asked her about it, and she scanned that, and I sent it to you.
Alright, yeah, so I guess that's on me, where I didn't like, get that to you, but that's why it shouldn't be on me, it should be directly with her. Uh, because I must have missed that email and didn't get it to you, and it wasn't intentional, I apologize. Alright, yes.
Just for the record, are written town policies, public records in your eyes?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to have copies of re- formal policies?
I don't think it matters what our eyes think about it, it is the law.
I agree, they're public records.
It is public record.
Well, not everything is the law, if, for example, this says police details, which could, they may have a security element or whatever, or.
Yeah.
HR reasons, I'm just curious if written policies are part of public records, so if I contact one of your people and say you have a policy on this, can I please get a copy, that's. An acceptable request.
Sounds like that would be a public record, and I have no, yeah, I could be wrong in this moment, but.
No, I mean, it's always the odd case, but in general.
Yeah, I can't think of anything that would not qualify as public record and would need to be redacted from a policy.
Hmm. Right.
Um, but like I said, I could be wrong in this moment, so. Uh, but yeah, that's the intention right now, until something questionable comes up.
Well, the lady says, don't let the.
I don't know, but yeah, I, they seem like that they would be public record to me, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And everything else being said, I am very much a supporter.
You're very much what?
A supporter of right to know, I think it's absolutely, we need it. Whatever else I may have said.
I know.
I firmly believe in the right to know, and I, and I do understand.
I didn't mean to yell at you just now, but you had said you would facilitate, and what actually happened is you contacted the police secretary.
Yeah. Would try. Hmm.
We coordinated a time that was suitable for them, so on and so forth, but your chief of police stepped up and said, no. So that is one of your employees saying that, no, he's not authorized by your instructions, R ninety-one A. So that's where the, the tie is, you make the call and made an arrangement.
Yeah.
And nothing happened, and actually, we were totally.
But eventually something happened, and then there was this, like, oh, it's redacted, and then that, redacted form was corrected.
No, it's nothing eventually happened. And you talked about trying to fulfill requests, you go back through all the requests, most of them are redundant because we never see it.
Yeah.
And you're talking about mountains of paper, and yet we've never asked for a copy of anything. If it's electronic, as this is, that according to RSA you sent. All we've ever asked is to view folders, no one's ever asked anybody to print out tons and tons of paper and file and make piles of this and that.
Hmm.
I asked to.
And I'm not sure the ins and outs of while that was done, and again, that was in the past, and now we're trying to like, firm footing to walk on now.
But that's why it happened, because you're creating a monster that you, for no reason.
Yeah.
Asking to view, for example, I asked you to legal, uh, you went out, did fourteen cases, fourteen invoices. I didn't need to see those fourteen invoices, I needed to add up the totals for one set of things, which would have been open a little folder.
Yeah. I figured it'd sa- save you a trip, is out of consideration.
The thing is, a ninety-one A that says that you don't have to save me the trip, what you have to do.
I know, don't have to save you the trip, but we did.
Allow me to see the file, period.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's not even showing me the file, by the way.
Well, there's, there's probably many files, like, I don't.
Because I don't know. Uh?
There were two files.
I don't know that it's complete.
Yeah.
So if you show, that's what the chief did, he printed a hundred and fourteen pages, and you saw how many things of files of where we went through. But he determined it was a hundred and fourteen pages that he charged me for.
Which you didn't have to pay.
And by the way, that check that I paid for that with, sat in somebody's office for three years.
I thought you didn't, he, he took that out, he said, no, we're not gonna charge you.
I'm just saying that, we paid for a check for copies, sat in his office for three years, uncashed, and then, I forgot who, sent my wife a letter saying. You need to reissue this check.
Hmm.
You have an accounting problem, I had, passed, I was.
Put your hand on your mouth. This is what you might want to promise.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I, I'll turn for a minute.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry, I'm happy.
Put it on here.
Okay, right, and where you want.
There you go.
Then if you would actually like to look at the file themselves and touch them, by all means, at some point, come and check a file.
Well. I'm just saying, your RSA says to view and give me the option of copying in my own way, or paying for copies. But the problem is with, your police chief doesn't seem to understand that you, uh.
Oh, I believe, yeah, just some uh, question about what information needs to be redacted, on that stuff, but.
Sure, I just need my questions.
The problem is that he feels that. If you ask for something, it's his job to pull it out and say this, if you ask to view a file, one of the things you get is knowing that you have everything in the file. You sent me, I forgot how many, fourteen pages of a legal thing, because that's all that's in the file, I have to take your word for it, in which case.
Hmm. Hey, and now we'll see, right?
Huh?
And now we'll see.
Well, there's probably one more now, because we, another month has gone by since.
Well, that's not bad.
And then now one more for the request, but I don't know that that fourteen was.
You will. Right, do you wanna see the file right now?
No.
We can see it right now, you know what, I want, I would like to see the files.
I pulled out the information.
I would be happy to go get that.
Did you fulfill it?
Please.
Did you fulfill your.
Do you mind if we take up a little bit more of your time?
You're welcome, but I have pulled out, I didn't need to see the whole file, I needed to extract information, which is what I did. And seeing that that was all the information was in there, I assumed to be correct.
So you're happy with what you received?
Huh?
You're happy with what you received or not?
I am happy with what I received, I'm just pointing out that when you send selected pages out of a file, that's not viewing the file.
Okay.
It was all the pages.
That's okay, understood, Alan, understood, alright, I thought, I thought it was a good thing.
Okay. And making. Making copies is creating work for you or whoever, when all that has to happen is someone goes.
Alright.
The RSA says if it's during operation, in the place that the files are normally stored, there's no reason it shouldn't be immediate if somebody walks in. And also say it doesn't require a written request. So, this is all great, you wanna do this, but I should be able to walk in and say, please show me that file. And within a minute or two, someone should be able to give me that file, will sit me down, let me look through it.
Hmm.
That's not the case at all.
Well, we'll get there for you. And I know that there are some questions of, um, what needs to be redacted, what doesn't. Um, and anything that's been redacted, to my knowledge, was through the advice of counsel, of what needed to be redacted on. Forms that were given to you, which would make us have to make a copy of it in order to redact the information.
I didn't know there was anything need to be, have seen as redacted.
Hey, that's, that's what was advised at those different points, but.
I know.
So that's where the copies came from.
That was your chief of police's excuse, that it all needed to be redacted, and when we went through it, there was nothing redacted anywhere, that was just a delay tactic.
I, I can understand, how do you have that as from your perspective, yeah.
It's all, by the way, since you've been chairman.
What's that?
All this fast that we're not talking about.
Yeah, 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 it's been a headache ever since, uh, trying to work through it, alright. So, everybody's had the same guidance, you know, since you brought up some, I've been chairman, same guidance for me. Was just, whatever we can do to fulfill the request as fast as possible, get them fulfilled. Um, and that's always been the tone, so apologies, you know, for the past, but we're here now and. Seems like we're getting the right footing under us, and I'd like to just move forward and conduct business in a positive nature, and get you what you're looking for.
And we've talked about the police detail ordinance, and you've tried a couple of times to not meet. Were you planning on meeting on that, or should I just drop that as a discussion and we do what?
Yeah, no, I'll meet with you, uh, no, I just, I'm sorry, yeah, just, yeah.
I know, but.
Yep.
Or would you either meet with your accounting people, or who's the police, police liaison now?
I'm sorry, what?
Who's the plea, uh, police liaison?
I am.
I can meet with four, the three, if you wish, it matters not to me.
No, I want you for myself. I want you for myself.
Oh geez, alright, so that, you know, if you would like to work with Lou on that, I think it'd be appropriate, you know, and that's fine.
I want, I'll, all I wanted, I found a number of issues with it, and I wanted to address one of the selectmen, if not all. And explain my position and show what the law says.
Hmm.
And then see if you agree and discuss it amongst yourself as to whether changes need to be made. I had the same thing with the employee handbook, whether or not what laws are being followed or not.
Hmm.
And whether or not you're gonna address that this year, so.
Alright.
But you don't have a liaison for the town offices.
Uh, that'd be all three of us.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you want to start with Lou, you know, it's volunteer's time.
Sure. Last name starts with A, right?
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright.
I'll be on the top of your list.
Alright, anything else?
I had walked out of stuff, but nothing urgent.
This evening? Alright. Thank you.
But the one good thing. Is you can feel free to be submitting ninety-one A's. To the town clerk or whoever, I don't.
Well, technically you don't have to submit a ninety-one A. It's supposed to be.
Request, I'm sorry, request a ninety-one A, yeah.
I'm, I know that you can talk to different people without.
Which you knew before, you were just.
That means they can't give you a break.
You were just, um.
Never told that.
Making, you were just making a point. You knew that, you knew legally you could go to the town clerk and you could say. I request this information, I mean, you knew that all along.
Well, it turned into that, yeah, that you have to formally request, which is why I took all of that unfulfilled. Couple dozen ninety-one A's, and went to an attorney with it. So that's when we actually got action.
Well, clarity, you know, there's a lot of work for clarity, cause uh, I'm not doing this.
Yeah.
So at any rate, we're at, at a, at a good pace now, um, yeah, yeah. So I'm happy that we're doing this and it's public session and all the loose ends are getting wrapped up, funny how that works out. So, uh, with that. Uh, have a good evening, everyone, we're going to a non-public session. Uh, make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three two L.
Hold on, do.
Is there a second?
You have a question.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Are you coming back into session afterward?
No.
That's all I know.
Alright.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.